This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to reopen our Harwich Board of Selectments meeting for January 4, 2021. I'm pleased I got your year right. We opened our meeting at 6:00 and then went into executive session, which we considered the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may be detrimental effect. Bad discussion on the possible, supporting a possible purchase of land. It was a good discussion. We still have a couple more questions that we'd like answers for clarification, and so we'll bring that back as executive session in a couple weeks. I'll ask next to, will you join me in a pledge of allegiance? And Joe, you said you found a flag?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll get that shared in just one moment.
If you'll join me in a pledge of allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands.
To which it stands.
Indivisible, indivisible, for all. Thank you. You're tricky with the flag. Thanks again, Joe. We move next into weekly briefing, and as usual, Joe, Megan, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, in a moment, I'm actually going to turn it over to Katie O'Neil from the Health Department. Megan is on a well-earned and well-timed vacation, so Katie is ready to step in. Before I hand it over to Katie, just want to let the board and everyone know that Governor Baker did an update today, and really, the major points that I took it from, took from his update today, I'm sure Katie and Megan might have different perspective, more related to strictly health. My focus was on his announcement that at the end of the week, he expects to make a decision on what phase we will be in. As you know, the phase that we're presently in, he was set to have on January 10th, and so he will update us towards the end of the week. He also announced the standing up of another field hospital, if you will, and indicated that there are no further plans for other field hospitals to be stood up. And I mention that because, as you recall, in the springtime and early summer, there was a hospital stood up at the Joint Air Base. Based on the governor's statement today, it looks like that there was no expectation of standing up a field hospital on Cape Cod, which I'm hopeful is an indication of the needs are being met through our local hospitals. So we expect to hear more from Governor Baker throughout the week, and certainly by the end of the week as to the decision-making on what phases we'll be going into. And then with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just hand it straight over to Katie for her update.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Hope Megan is relaxing. She certainly deserves a break. So I'll go over her report. Some things have changed a little bit. We did have a delay in getting some of the numbers in with the holiday and then the weekend. So her report doesn't reflect a few extra cases that we have. I believe we're up to 37 now, which her report presents 29. Of those cases, 11 are associated with Wingate, where several residents and many staff members have tested positive. Wingate is following a rigid testing protocol to attempt to contain the spread. Over the last two weeks, we have had an increase of 41 cases, bringing our total to 306. Our percent positivity has decreased to 3.88%. However, we continue to see community transmission. Hospital capacity is still a concern across the Commonwealth and here in Barnstable County. Cape Cod and Falmouth Hospitals report 50 patients, with seven of them in the ICU, and that was as of December 30. Outer Cape Health Services has announced that they are offering free rapid testing for asymptomatic individuals through January 10. An appointment is necessary and can be made by calling 508-905-2888. Additional testing options for those who are symptomatic have been, or exposed to a positive case to meet travel order are also available at Outer Cape, as well as two locations offered by Cape Cod Healthcare, at the Melody Tent in Hyannis and at the Barnstable Fairgrounds. To book appointments for the Hyannis or Falmouth locations, please call the community testing line at 508-534-7103. And again, the phone number for the Lower Cape, Outer Cape, is 508-905-2888. The COVID-19 vaccine has been administered to frontline work, healthcare workers, and long-term care facility and staff residents. The next rollout of vaccine is scheduled for this week, with the clinics starting next week for first responders. Once everyone in Phase 1 has been vaccinated, the Department of Public Health will work with local Boards of Health, pharmacies, and other healthcare providers to distribute vaccine to the Phase 2 populations. For a comprehensive list of who's eligible to receive the vaccine during each phase, please visit mass.gov/infodetails/whencanigeatacovid19. Although the numbers of residents testing positive this week is lower than in the past three weeks, I fear that we yet to see the effects of the holiday last week. With New Year's approaching, we will continue to expect higher numbers in one to two weeks' time. And Megan ends her report by encouraging everyone to celebrate the New Year safely and responsibly, and we hope everyone did do that. We'll find out this week with what the numbers show. If there's any questions on Megan's report, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Katie. Any comments or questions for Katie or for Joe on the COVID-19 report? I guess we'll keep our fingers crossed. Moving next then to Cindy on the how's our business is doing?
Great. Good evening. Happy New Year to everyone. As Joe just mentioned, I too was watching the governor's report earlier today, and we're closely waiting and watching what he'll say later in the week. With that being said, I don't know how many people saw in the Cape Cod Times this past week, but one of our restaurants was highlighted, showing and sharing what they are doing to protect their diners. The 400 East has recently installed UV technology air purification system, along with plexiglass dividers between their booths and at the bar. This is just one of the many ways that they're doing, ways to protect and make their regulars and diners feel comfortable and safe. Currently, we have 12 other restaurant establishments that are open, and I'm just going to have everyone refer to our website. I know we have a full agenda tonight, so I'm not going to go through the 12 restaurants, but we do have those on a dedicated page on the Chamber's website. And then we've also seen some of our retailers watching the numbers and have chosen to do curbside delivery and shopping online right now. So those are some of the changes that have occurred in the last week or so while everyone was on holiday. And then the final announcement, we've been working with the small businesses on the sector-specific grant program that's out there. The application expires on, or closes, rather, January 15th. So I've been working with many of our members on that. That is for businesses that have really been hit the hardest. There's some grant money available through the administration and Mass Grant Community Corporation is handling that. So other than that, everyone's going forward in 2021.
Cindy, is your, is the Chamber's website the best place to quickly learn what each businesses are doing in terms of?
Yes. So what I'm doing is, right now, we've got all the restaurants up to date. There are 13 that are currently open. You can click right to each of their websites, but it tells you exactly whether they're doing inside dining and takeout or what. And then I'm working with all the retailers now to then get a similar dedicated page for that, so then people can just click. Instead of trying to search for the different businesses, we'll have a dedicated page for retail, and then it'll be each, you know, shopping hardware, whatever the different industry is. People can just click on that and then shop directly, kind of like having our own Harwich Amazon.
Okay.
But we'll have everything dedicated right there on the Harwich Chamber.
Other comments? Questions for Cindy? Thanks again. We move on to, I see nothing for public comments, unless, Joe, you know something different than that.
I have not heard that there was anyone that requested.
Let's move then to the annual committee presentations. See, we have some folks here from the Water, Waste Water Water Commissions to give an annual report. Gary, are you going to hold to take the charge of that? Well, maybe Dan.
I am, Larry, I am. First, I just wanted to apologize for missing our December 21st meeting. Time got away from me. No, I'm here.
Well, that never happens.
Yeah, I just wanted to apologize for missing that December 21st meeting. Time just got away from me that night. On behalf of the Water and Waste Water Commissions, I'm here to respectfully submit the following annual, I appreciate that. I'm here to report on the Water and Waste Water Commission's report, submitting the following annual report to the Board of Selectment for 2020. As I'm sure we're all aware, that at the town election, residents approved a charter change, expanding the role and the oversight of the Water Commissions to include wastewater. So the BOWWC presently consists of three members, the chairman, myself, Vice Chair Judith Underwood, and Clerk Alan Thompson. In addition to the extended role and oversight, the recent charter change will also expand the board's membership from a three members to a five effective this year at the 2020 Harwich Town Elections. Our meetings are generally held bi-weekly on Thursday afternoons via go-to meeting, and board members have all completed the required Mass State Ethics Training. We have no attendance issues. All members have been sworn in, and our agenda and minutes are posted appropriately. As far as our accomplishments and projects, I know you have a large agenda this year. We, over the course of the year, the commissioners review the rules of regulations of water rates, and I know Dan will be meeting and talking later about the wastewater rules and regulations, so I'm going to let Dan touch on that. But the board did vote to increase rates for 2020, but due to the pandemic, we decided to put a hold on that. So the board is planning to hold a rate hearing this spring, with new rates becoming effective for fiscal year 2022, while July 1, 2021. We've also, we did a water service renewal project. In advance of the recent National Grid paving project, the department replaced 85 old steel water services on Great Western Road, Depot Road and Street, Queen Anne Road and Main Street. By doing a lot of the work in-house, the department was able to save approximately $30,000. Now, the next project we have coming up is the Pleasant Lake Storage Tank. We're going to replace the existing pipe, which is a 12-inch pipe, to a 24-inch pipe. The 12-inch pipe just isn't filling the tank to its capacity, so by going to a 24-inch pipe, we're hoping to be able to, you know, use the entire tank. Upcoming projects, we have a new source exploration. The department is requesting funds. At the 2021 Annual Town Meeting, for the purpose of well exploration, the department currently operates 14 drinking water wells with a total pumping capacity of approximately 6,000 gallons per minute. The newest well was installed in 1998 on Pleasant Bay Road. The peak data demands have increased from 4.7 million gallons in 1998 to over 6.5 million gallons in recent years. The addition of new drinking water well will aid in meeting the peak season's demands. I would say the largest project we have coming up is the Route 28 water main replacement. We are currently evaluating the replacement of the 1937 cast iron water main on Route 28 from Lower Conne Road to the Dennis Town Line, which is approximately 2.3 miles. The water main has been the subject of six major water main breaks in the last five and a half years, and is beyond its useful life. The department intends on requesting design funds at the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. And just on a positive note also, I just wanted to, you know, let you know that in the Public Water Supplies Award, the Harwich Water Department was selected for the 2020 Mass DEP Public Water Systems Award, due to the pandemic, the way in which the water systems were evaluated differs from years past. In the words of Mass DEP, "The world as we know it has been transformed since the start of the COVID-19 pandemic," and the 2020 Public Water Systems Award program is no exception. This year's program was strictly compliance-based, and the systems have had no enforcement or compliance issues for 2019 and the prior five years, which is a rather impressive feat to achieve, were included. So I was pretty proud of the department for, again, the 2020 Suppliers Award. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Gary, just a quick comment. I'm in the area that sewer lines are being installed, and I appreciate the very quick response from some water leaks that resulted during that time of old pipes, if I should have been replaced anyway, but that was very appreciative. Can I ask, when you look for new wells, what area town will you be looking? Will be a new, an area that's not, doesn't currently have wells in, or what's your thoughts on that?
We're looking, we're looking on the other side of Route 6 right now. We only have, I believe, Dan Pelletier is on the call. I'm not sure which well we have up there.
Well 10.
Well 10. So that's, I believe it's north of Route 6.
Don's nodding yes, so Dan's nodding yes on that. So, okay, thank you. Questions, comments, Don?
Hi, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious to both Dan and Gary. I appreciate the delay on the rate increase, but rolling into this year, because of the pandemic, we wound up with a town that had a census of about 12,400, give or take. And I get that you have to plan for big capacity, because it inflates every year in the summertime, in normal times, by about a factor of three. But my question is, when elections were actually held, we had 13,000 registered voters, whereas when the census went out, we had 12,400 full-time residents with about 10,000 people who were registered to vote. By implication, we've just taken on about 25% new permanent residents. Waiting for Big Ben to stop here. I guess my question is, how's that impacting what you're doing? Because there are too many moving parts, as far as I could see. You've got the infrastructure, the infrastructure that's got to be designed around max use, but you've also got purification and wells that have to sustain a full-time population year-round. So you want to comment on that at all?
So this, I'm not sure I understand. The question was, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
We've grown by about 25% full-time residents. So in the off-season, you're still delivering water to 25% more people ultimately than you were before this all started. And that's not going to shake out in our census until probably next year, but the fact is that we've got more registered voters now than our census says we even have registered living here. So, I mean, and the increase has been about three grand, so it's about, like I said, about 25% more users year-round. Is that impacting you at all, or?
So we just finished the highest pumping year we've had on record. You know, in the winter months right now, we're not doing too much more than we have historically. This time of year, we're hovering between 900,000 gallons a day, you know, to a million gallons a day. This summer and fall, it was a longer season, and we were trending more consistently over 6 million gallons a day, where we were usually trending like 5.4, 5.5 million. So we saw a higher consistent trend in the summer, but it hasn't been too noticeable, at least at this point in the winter yet.
Okay. I think you got your eyes on it, I'm assuming.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions for Dan or for Gary? Thank you very much for the report. Next on the agenda is the Capitol Outlay Committee. And Rich Lariot, so are you going to address this?
Sure. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Happy New Year to everyone, and glad we made it to 2021. The Capitol Outlay Committee, in case anyone doesn't really know the intricate sub, it, the role of the Capitol Outlay Committee, and I'm reading verbatim, and it's in your package, but for those who are on the line, who are watching Channel 18, the role of the Capitol Outlay Committee is to assist the town administrator in the effort to develop an annual seven-year capital plan. This plan includes expenditures of $50,000 or greater, and it excludes acquisition of land for conservation, open space, or watershed protection. The committee meets monthly, and a little caveat there, it meets more than monthly during normal times from October through December, almost once a week then. All meetings are open to the public with due notice, and the minutes are regularly filed with the town clerk. In addition, regular participants include the town administrator, the town, the town finance director, and a liaison for the Board of Selectment. Membership by the committee consists of seven members, two appointed by the board, two by the town administrator, one by the planning board, and two by the finance committee, all with three-year overlapping terms. All members are actively involved in discussing and addressing financial issues impacting the town of Harwich. Committee membership and participation remains strong and stable. By charter, the town administrator presents a plan to the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee each December, which has happened, followed by an advertised public hearing, all subject to ultimate, to the ultimate town meeting action. The members of the committee currently are Bruce Nightingale from the Selectmen, Joe McCarland from the Planning Board, Angela Lamantilla from the Finance Committee, Noreen Dunnehew from the Selectmen. We have two vacant, one from town administrator, one from finance, and myself from the town administrator. Our Selectman liaison is Don Howell. In 1920, I'm sorry, 2020, Peter Wall, longtime member of the committee, retired. We thank him for his valued participation and service. All members have been sworn in by the town clerk. State ethics testing has been taken as up to date, and agenda meetings have been taken and posted as required. As a result, and I don't have the plan here, because the charge of tonight is discussing the life of the committee, 2022 Capitol projects equal almost $20 million. Departmental requests of related dollar amounts have been reviewed by the Capitol Outlay Committee. Recommendations by them were made on December the 11th of 2020. We want to thank the interim town administrator, Joe Powers, for his time, effort, and expertise in assisting the Capitol Outlay Committee in completing this year's capital plan, especially submitted, Rich Lariot.
Thank you, Rich.
Yep.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Comments or questions for Rich and the Capitol Outlay Committee? Seeing that, Rich, we'll move on. We look forward to our upcoming meetings when we get into the numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Right now. Next on the agenda is the committee, the cemetery report, and I'm not sure who's going to carry this. Robin, are you presenting this, or?
No, I will be doing it.
Looks like Steve Connor is.
Yes, Steve is going to.
Steven, go for it.
Okay. I see I have the committee members here, so I believe I have to call the committee meeting to get to me, because we have a quorum.
Yes.
Okay, is Rob Thompson here? Just waiver off, I can see you.
I'm here.
And myself, Steve Connor, is here. So I call it the meeting of the Cemetery Commission at 7:05. Like to give, I hope you guys had a chance to read our presentation that was sent in. I'll go over some of the points without that. We have three current commissioners, myself, as commission chair, Cindy Eldridge, who was the former commissioner chair, and Robert Thompson, just joined the top, just joined the commission. We'd like to welcome him, and thanks Cindy Eldridge for her dedicated service over the past few years. This past year, we had a total of 61 burials, and 39 recreation, creation burials, and 23 were the traditional burials. We had 30 families who have lost loved ones due to COVID for the past year, and are waiting to have their services when it, when the travel bans all left, and people can show up. Get this computer to work. And on March 10th, when Governor Baker declared a state of emergency, we had to lower the amount of people at the cemeteries. It started out at 50, and now we're down to 10, and then increased it back up to 25 people in attendance, and I believe that has gone back down to 10 also now. As of December 20, as of December in 2020, the balance of the cemetery revolving fund was $93,000, $329.84, which $30,110 is in reserve for the arboretum mapping software package, leaving us a balance of $62,219.84. In the past year, the work, some of the things we've done, Island Pond Cemetery was certified as a wildlife habitat, and we also continue to clean up the cemeteries from the July 19 tornado, with the damaged trees, and we have been replacing some of the trees. The approval at a town meeting, Article 32, for the Pine Grove Cemetery and Constitution Commission, we were restoring the monuments and fencing around the cemeteries. We have, and one big project we've gone on is the Veterans Memorial at Evergreen Cemetery. We've submitted for a CPC article for a gazebo, and all the branches of the military, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines Coast Guard, and the new Space Force that they have. So there'll be, the flag pulls around that, and that's over around the gazebo in the new Evergreen Cemetery. And the Marsline Arboretum at Island Pond, our administrator, Robin Kelly, has been working with Ashley Burdo as an AmeriCorps member from September, every Tuesday and Wednesday, and we are fortunate to have Ashley to help with this project. She is indexing all the trees for the arboretum and Island Pond property, and she has helped out with the brochures and worked with Kelly on this. And we got a letter this year from the Selectmen naming James C. Marsline Arboretum at the Island Pond Cemetery, approving the name for that. And tomorrow at our meeting, we'll be working on the accreditation application for the, for the Marsline Arboretum at Island Pond. AmeriCorps, we had, they've been at Island Pond, removing invasive species. We've installed new signs at the, at the cemeteries. The local historian Duncan Berry led a talk at Pine Grove Cemetery along with Harwich Historical Society and Robin Kelly, cemetery administrator, on prominent residents of Harwich. We worked on the mapping software project on Article 32, to be funded by the cemetery evolving account, which would make it easier for people to find burial sites, grave sites, and people of interest in the cemeteries. We have fixed electrical problems at Evergreen Cemetery, and Evergreen Cemetery AmeriCorps project was completed on December 20, on December 2020, lifting up the canopy of trees by pruning over limbs, snapping smaller trees, 2020, lifting up the canopy of trees by pruning over limbs, snapping smaller trees, shaping smaller trees and shrubs, and removal of invasive species. The items that will be addressed by the Commission 21, we updated the rules and regulations for the town own main cemeteries. The Harwich Cemetery has been removed from the list of cemeteries. The one by the church, the commission had also additional charges that were supposed to go to the annual town meeting but were removed, and we'll be bringing that forth in 2022, too. And we're going to finalize the Kelly Cemetery out there, the land taking from that, and design the Stubble Warren Revolution War memorials to be placed at the Veterans Memorial Circle in Evergreen Cemetery. That pretty much covers a busy year.
Thank you, Stephen. Questions or comments? It's been a very busy year. Robin, could you give us more details on the mappings?
$155 in the account, and I did meet with another family, another groups of families. So I'll be selling seven more lots next week. So it's been very busy. People are pre-planning and purchasing lots. I don't know if they're just now listening to all of the news and getting, you know, their affairs in order, but it's been extremely busy for lot sales and for meeting with people. It's just not many services are having, taking place because
Very difficult year, year, no doubt about that. Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
As far as comments, we'll, we'll move on to the next item in the agenda.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you have Facilities Committee next.
Which is, yeah, just part of my agenda. I'll go back and forth. So next on the agenda, Joe, thank you, is the Community Center Facilities Committee. I see Carolyn here, and I'm not sure whether you're going to lead this or someone from your committee.
If you don't mind, one of the members of my committee who is going to be presenting has gotten called away and asked if I could fill in, if that's okay with the board?
Sure.
Great. I know that you have received their report, and all of the members, we are a full board. There are five members, Angelina Chalaka, Brian Powers, Ralph Smith, Sean Libby, and our newest member, appointed from the Recreation Commission to fill the seat of Lee Culver, is Van Ketchatorian. We started our report by paying tribute to Lee Culver, who was the chairman for almost 12 years of the Facilities Committee, who passed away on January 19th. He was certainly a driving force, not only for the Facilities Committee, but on several boards here in the building. The community center itself is up and operational. We have our weight room operational. We are still doing passports. We are allowing small groups and organizations to meet. We have partnered with the schools to do events like the egg giveaway during COVID times. We've had a drive-through Halloween party, all under the guidelines of the Health Director, to make sure that it was, be safe for everyone. We're excited to report that we are getting new ideas to try and be creative in program planning. We're looking at Zoom licensing to help larger groups because our numbers are like everyone else's. We're unable to host groups of over 25 here in the building. Some of our groups and organizations are back and meeting in classrooms. Those are groups under 10 participants. So basically, I went through some of the highlights of the report. I know that it is in there. I know you have a full agenda. I'm happy to answer any question or fill in any of the blanks that were missing from the report, but I appreciate the opportunity to let you know and apologize on behalf of the board who was not able to be here tonight.
No apology necessary. It's a very detailed report, and so I hopefully just answered questions, but I'll throw it open. So any questions for Carolyn? Comments?
Tough year to be a facilities manager.
It's a tough year to be a lot of things, but we're grateful for the town who has been so supportive, and certainly the administration and all of you.
And we appreciate your efforts.
Carolyn, one question comes to mind. When people need wheelchairs or crutches, are those, are those still available? They contact you?
Actually, they contact the Council on Aging, who does an exceptional job at giving out medical equipment. They can make an appointment, and they will arrange to have it ready for them outside of the entrance to the building, but the Council on Aging is exceptional, and you can call for an appointment for them.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
We'll leave it there then. If there's no other questions or comments, then move to the next item in the agenda, which is, Joe, I think, is the Harbor Management Plan?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
I'd ask for someone over our fellow members to open the public hearing.
Larry, I'll open the public hearing and read the public notice.
Thank you.
The Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Monday, January 4th, 2021, no earlier than 6:30 PM during their regularly scheduled meeting. This hearing will be held by remote participation for the purpose of reviewing a proposed amendment to the Harbor Management Plan. All members of the public having an interest in this topic are cordially invited to attend via dial-in number. Dial-in information will be posted on the meeting agenda that is located on the town website. Harwich Board of Selectmen running the Cape Cod Chronicle, December 24th, 2020.
Thank you, Michael. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll take a roll call then to officially open the public hearing. I'm an I. Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed? Ed, you're muted. If you're trying to say aye, I'll move on to, thank you, Ed. Steve?
Aye.
Joe, I'll do, uh, lead this discussion. I see John's here as well, but.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it right over to the Harbor Master for his presentation, based on the memo that you can see in the packet. Excuse me.
Thank you, Joe. And John, floor is yours or a screen, whichever?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John, Don, Harbor Master, thanks for having me. I'm looking to get your permission to add a, an additional Class C unattached charter permit. So just real quick, we have, we have what we call attached Class C charter permits. Those, the attached/unattached, the only distinction is the Class C attached permits, there's a slip within the marina attached to that permit. So folks who have that permit, when they give up that permit, they actually give up their slip. The slip goes with the permit. The unattached is a little different. The only requirement, according to our regulations, that is that a, an individual has to have a full-time berth within the town of Harwich. It could be at the marina. It could be a town slip. It could be a private slip. It could be at a private marina. It could be on a mooring. The permit only is, is there to allow the person to run a business utilizing town facilities, utilizing our bulkheads to offload catch or to pick up passengers. And so we currently have only three unattached C permits, and what I'm looking to do is to increase that number by one, adding an additional permit. But that permit, I would propose that we designate it for sale charters only. As my memo said, we used to have a sale charter, Cape Sail, that operated out of the marina that ran sailboat charters. Was very popular, very successful. That individual did it for many years and has since retired, and when he retired and gave up that permit, the permit went to the waitlist, and the next person on the waitlist decided to do fish charters. So we currently have no sale charter or sailboat available for charters within the town. And so what I'm looking to do is add a permit, but designate it for sale only. So I've kind of detailed in the memo how I would go about doing that, but essentially, if approved, we'd go to the current waitlist, and we'd ask those people on the waitlist whether they intend to do a sale charter. The first person on that list who does would be issued the permit, and then we would establish that those folks on that waitlist, we would designate those that want to do sale-only charters. So we wouldn't have a separate waitlist. We'd use the existing waitlist. Nobody's disadvantaged by doing that, and I think it provides, you know, another option for folks within Harwich. So if there's any questions, I'd certainly attempt to ask.
Thank you. Thank you, John, for that explanation. I actually was a little confused in your memo a little bit on how you would keep the list the same and give the sailboat people the, the step up to get the, to utilize the sailboats. That helped. Is there, are there questions for John? Is there anyone in the, on the Zoom call that wishes to?
Larry?
Comment. Yes.
Who's that?
Ed?
Yeah, John, if somebody comes up on the waitlist, or one of these C unattached, or, or even attached and wants to do sale charters instead of fish charters, are they allowed to do that?
So if, if, when we go to these people on the waitlist, they can certainly say, hey, I want to be a designated sale charter, or they're going to tell us, no, I, I don't want to be considered. I have no intention of doing a sale charter. When that, when that one permit, if, say that one permit becomes available, and we go to the waitlist, we will bypass all those on the waitlist that says, that said, I have no intention of doing sale charters. I don't want to do sale charters. And we would go to the first person. That first person could be number 10 on the list, but they're the first person who said, I intend to do. If we, if it didn't do that, and we went to the first person on the waitlist, and we offered a permit, but they don't have a sailboat and don't want to do sale charters, then, you know, we have a three-strike rule. So if you, if you say, I don't want that permit, well, that's one offer, and then you'd, you'd get a second offer, and on the third offer, you would get dropped off the list. So by bypassing these folks who have said, I have no intention of doing sell charters, they don't, they don't get a strike against them.
Mr. Chairman, water. Comments, you should close the public hearing.
Well, I know that, Don. I was just going to do that. It snuck in on me.
I move that we close the public hearing.
And if there's no public comments, I'll close the public hearing. I'll take a roll call for that. Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an I. So that will, any other questions from Selectmen? Don? Or Ed first and Don?
Sure.
John, so John, I understand that this, this one permit was be reserved for sale charters, but if the next, the next permit that becomes available, you offer it to the person on the top of the list, and they may have changed, changed, changed their business model and decided they want to do sale charters, can they take that permit and do sale charters? Or is it restricted to fishing charters?
If I understand you correctly, you know, all our other permits, they're not designated.
Okay.
So all the other permits, they can be sail, they can fish, they can do seal tours, they can do sunset cruises, they can, there, there are no designation on any of the permits. This would be the only one.
Okay, that's all, that's what I wanted to find out.
Okay. Thank you. Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a comment. We are, at the end of the day, I mean, I remember going through this 20 years ago with the ferry. We are, at the end of the day, a resort community, and things that support people coming here as an amenity are really important. So I mean, I think that this is an innovative way of approaching this, John. So I, I think it's really important that we present these kinds of opportunities because if it's just homeowners, leisure boat owners, we're missing the point that we really need to have a destination receptive services.
Thank you, Don. Any other comments?
Larry, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
I move that we approve the proposed change to Harbor Management Plan by adding, by the adding of a Class C charter unattached permit designed for sale charters.
Second.
If there was a discussion, I'll take a roll call. Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an I. So John, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the discussion regarding Montmore Regional School District Elementary Schools enrollment and funding inequities. And Joe, I'll let you introduce this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you may recall, prior to the holiday break, Dr. Carpenter was able to present a thumbnail sketch, really, of the situation that we find ourselves in with enrollment at the elementary school level. Dr. Carpenter was kind enough to give us that thumbnail sketch the evening before he presented the presentation you're about to hear now, when he presented to the Chatham Board of Selectmen. So I know that the material is repetitive, but I'm sure Dr. Carpenter has more to get into, and perhaps an update on how it went when he presented to your peers in, in Chatham. At this point, I would ask you to recognize Dr. Carpenter.
Good evening, Dr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Joe. If it's okay with you, could I project my screen so I could just share the PowerPoint presentation with?
I appreciate that.
Can you see the screen okay?
I can.
Okay, so, so thank you. So, so first of all, my. So, so first of all, my, my name's Scott Carpenter. I am the superintendent at Montmore Regional Schools. I am also, just a little point of information, a new Harwich resident. So I just last month moved into a house on Harwood Avenue. So on our late night meetings, when we're actually in town hall, it's going to be a much shorter commute. So, but, but I am going to be presenting the, the presentation that I first shared with our school committee. Did a very abbreviated overview with your board before the holidays. Have spoke to the Chatham Select Board. And this is, this in many way isn't new information. It's, it's a conversation that's been ongoing for, for a number of years now. And it, and it all started when, you know, when we started to see a concerning decline in enrollment at Chatham Elementary School and conversations, you know, almost, you know, pushing four or five years ago, started about, you know, what the future might look like. So I'll just sort of preface that. So what we're, you know, what we are facing here is really over two decades of gradual demographic shifts on the Cape. That's happening across the Cape. This isn't something that's happening just in Chatham. It's happening in Harwich as well. There are, you know, there's increasingly fewer young families with school-aged children. And it's tied to a whole slew of issues that I know your board and the Chatham Board have been discussing. You know, everything from affordable housing to what does it cost to, you know, live on the Cape, raise a family, childcare options. Our community is not only a retirement destination, but there's an increasing Airbnb industry where, you know, houses that young families might be able to afford in our communities are oftentimes, you know, sort of snapped up and turned into Airbnb properties. Yeah, so we've seen this rate of attrition of, of young families varying by communities. But we're seeing a much greater rate happening in recent years in Chatham relative to Harwich. And a regional school district oftentimes, it's that, it's that it is something happening in one community relative to the other that derives some of the conversation. So what I've, what I've done is I initially did, did a one-page paper this past spring, just sharing concerns that I was having with regard to fiscal challenges that, that were starting to come up with the enrollment changes that are happening. And, and more recently, I, I sort of extended that to the eight-page document that I shared with your committee, that we shared with the, the board in, in Chatham and also our school committee and have on the, on our school's website. And it's just an eight-page paper that talks about the inequalities in Montmore's elementary per pupil budgets and the challenges with loss of elementary enrollment. But it also has about 17 pages of appendices that, that really get into, you know, to enrollments over the years, school choice enrollments, number of children from Harwich that attend Chatham Elementary and vice, and vice versa. And then the, the budgets at the, at the elementary levels. So, you know, so what I've taken here is just a snapshot of, of where we were at the start of regionalization and where we are relatively a decade later. And so, you know, so here we're comparing FY12 as the districts coming together and Harwich Elementary School and enrollment of 579 students. There were six children from Chatham attending Harwich Elementary School. At Chatham Elementary School and FY12, 279 students and 53 of their enrollment were children, were children from Harwich. For the FY21 numbers that we're presenting here, these are, are what our enrollment would be and what our budget would be in the current year had COVID not happened, you know, because we had developed budgets this time, this time last year that, that didn't have COVID on the horizon. We knew how many children were in the preschools that were going to be rolling up into our kindergarten. So we knew what the enrollments were going to be at Harwich Elementary School and Chatham Elementary School before the, the little hiccup that COVID has created for the year. And we knew what the budgets were going to look like. So, you know, so take that into consideration. I had one question in, in one of the presentations that we've had where someone had mentioned, well, it's not fair to go and look at FY21 because it has this, this sort of COVID challenge. So here we are in FY21. The enrollment at Harwich Elementary School has dropped over that last decade by, by, by 12%. So we have an enrollment now at Harwich Elementary School of 512. And, and at Chatham Elementary School, the enrollment's now dropped by over 100 to 170, which is a 39% drop in enrollment at, at Harwich Elementary School. And you'll also note there that, that only half the number of students from Harwich are now choosing Chatham Elementary School. And again, a lot of that's because this, you know, they are getting the same, you know, the same curriculum at both elementary schools, a great curriculum, but they're also, you know, getting the same, yeah, same education after elementary school. They go to the same middle school, go to the same high school. So the enrollment declines and the differential there is, it's really what's happening at Chatham Elementary School relative to Harwich that has created two dilemmas. The first dilemma is that because there is a rapidly declining enrollment at Chatham Elementary School relative to Harwich Elementary School, you're seeing per pupil costs in that school escalating. And, and if you think of running a school building, every school building has, has simple fixed costs. You have the fixed costs of a principal, a nurse, a librarian. Your electricity bill, you know, those, those fixed costs that divided out must have smaller than this for the children. And that's what tends to drive those, those per pupil rapid increases. The other dilemma that we have?
Scott, could I ask you to speak though more directly into the microphone? You're coming and leaving us a little bit.
All right, I'll just try to move myself a little closer. So I'm not sure where the mic is on my computer, but if, just feel free letting off your, if you're unable to hear. So the, the second dilemma that we have is, is that as, as one of our elementary schools gets, gets smaller and smaller, you potentially have a much smaller group of children to have, you know, sort of a rich social environment for those children to, you know, to grow in. But you also have a much smaller professional environment for our teachers to, to work and collaborate. And so, so you have two very different conversations that the enrollment decline sort of sparking. One is on the fiscal side, but the other one is on the educational side. So to first talk about the per pupil budget differences that we are seeing. So FY12, as the district was first starting to come together, the per pupil expenses at Harwich Elementary School relative to Chatham Elementary School, you know, we're within $1,000 of each other. And we have to keep in mind that, that back then, there was a significant number of the Chatham Elementary enrollment that actually were, you know, were Harwich, were Harwich children. It, you know, it was a smaller building, so it didn't have as much economies of scale. But what we've seen is that, you know, Chatham Elementary School has gotten much smaller faster than Harwich Elementary. So they're, they're both shrinking, but, but Harwich Elementary is, you know, is now, is now seeing, or sorry, Chatham Elementary is seeing a much larger per pupil expense than Chatham. So that, that difference in per pupil between the two elementary schools is getting closer to $5,000 in FY21. And if we look forward just four more years, and, and, and the reason we will, we're looking forward and projecting out to FY25 is that we, we in FY21 were seeing the first cohort of Chatham children where there was only one class of kindergarten children. And that class needed to be heavily subsidized by school choice from Harwich and other towns to round out a full kindergarten class. So in FY25, we don't see larger classes of, or of cohorts of, of children coming into Chatham Elementary School, looking out in the children that are currently in, at the preschool age and, and to be preschoolers. So we would anticipate in FY25 that Chatham Elementary will have one, you know, kindergarten cohort class, one first grade, one second, one third, one fourth. And it's going to become a very small school quickly. And that's going to create a situation where the per pupil costs at that school are going to start to magnify much more than Harwich Elementary School, which is going to be almost five times larger, looking, you know, looking out just four years into the future. So the inequity here is not that we are doing something different at Chatham Elementary School and providing something better that's more expensive. Both, you know, the children of both elementary schools are getting the same curriculum, the same program, you know, so we're having the same access to, you know, to specials and, and everything. It's, it's just that, you know, the inequity is how this impacts the taxpayers, particularly the, how it impacts the taxpayers in Harwich by virtue of the way our regional agreement is written. So the regional agreement takes the cost to operate the school district and it takes those costs and splits them between the two towns based on a three-year rolling average of foundation enrollment. You know, so, so in FY, in FY12, Harwich was paying 72% of, of that. In FY21, we're closer to 75%. By FY20, 25, we're probably looking at about 79%. And by, if we're, if we project out and, and if, if nothing changes based on what we're seeing in our kindergarten cohort right now, by FY33, that, that, that will likely spread to a 87, 13% split between the two, between the two towns. You know, so, you know, so the inequity really is, is how that regional agreement is, is written and how it impacts the two taxpayers. Because you, you can look at it and say, okay, how much is Harwich potentially subsidizing what's happening at Chatham Elementary School? So, you know, so, you know, we put together a little slide that, that really looks at, at that difference in per pupil expenditure at Chatham Elementary School where, when we first started, when there was still a significant number of Harwich children attending Chatham Elementary School, that, that per pupil delta times the number of students that attended the, the school, you know, was, you know, was in the neighborhood of, of a quarter of a million dollars more and that, that has, you know, that has grown now in FY21. And if we look out in FY25, you know, that gets to, you know, to over 1.2 million dollars. And again, this is, this is, if you look at per pupil budget, the reality is, it's the assessment that the two towns end up paying. And after you calculate in Chapter 70 and, and other things, that, the, the total impact is less, but it's still appreciable. So, you know, so if we look at the fiscal inequity piece and say, okay, how do we remedy this? This is not something that I, as superintendent, can do. It's not something that the school committee can do. We have a funding mechanism that is within the regional agreement and that funding mechanism would need to get amended over the long haul and would involve the support of the Selectmen in both towns and approval at town meeting in both towns to amend that. The school committee, based on, you know, based on the conversations that I was starting last, you know, last spring, has established a goal to develop a working group early in the budget process to discuss the regional assessment at the elementary level. That process has begun. We've developed a, a working group that's met, that's met a couple of times just to sort of get everybody educated on the, you know, this. And, and, you know, part of that process is, is formally presenting to, you know, to our school committee and to both Select Boards. So the recommendation that I made to our school committee, and I admit that it's simplistic in, in the way I look at it, is, is if we want to simplistically address it at the moment, the easiest way to do it is to just say, let's have both towns pay for their own elementary schools. Just develop an assessment formula that, that takes the cost to run Harwich Elementary School and has Harwich pay those costs, has the cost to have Chatham run its elementary school and have Chatham pay those costs. If we did that in the first year of regionalization, Chatham's assessment would have been $408,000 higher in FY13 and Harwich's $408,000 lower. If we did that this year in FY21, Chatham's assessment would be $572,000 higher. Harwich's would be $572,000 lower. And if we're looking out in FY25, that, you know, that number is only going to increase as the, as those fixed costs at Chatham Elementary School get spread between fewer and fewer students. So we can expect that it's going to balloon over the next, you know, over the next few years, which is one of the, you know, one of the reasons why this is developing sort of more of an urgency to, to discuss and come up with a, a agreeable solution. So one of the things that, you know, that I wanted to address that I think some people have looked at and said, well, hey, maybe this could be a solution. And that's, that's what if we went and took more Harwich students and put more Harwich students at Chatham Elementary School? Wouldn't that solve this per pupil discrepancy? The answer, you know, the answer is on paper, it would. You would have, you would have, you know, if you put lots of Harwich students into Chatham Elementary School by some mechanism, either redistricted students or created upper and lower elementary schools, you, you end up, you know, maybe equalizing your per pupil costs. But you've done it, I would argue, at the expense of the Harwich taxpayers because we've just created a situation, if we did it that way, where we, where we, where we created empty classrooms in Harwich Elementary School to fill classrooms at Chatham Elementary School. And, and, you know, I think that, that alone isn't a way to sort of fix this. I, I think there needs to be a discussion that, that, that needs to be sort of, you know, between the Select Boards and the finance committees to, you know, to dig into what would make sense. And as I said, my, you know, my simplistic way of looking at it is, is let's just have each town pay for their own elementary school. That would go a long way to providing some, you know, some, some fiscal relief that, that I think everybody could understand fairly easily. So then let me just shift gears to the second sort of dilemma that a, a small or increasingly small elementary school creates. And that's the ability to provide an ideal teaching and learning environment. So, so there is a lot of research that's been done out in, out the literature on the impact of small class sizes. There's, you know, so there's a lot of work that's been done, particularly in urban settings that take class sizes that are in the mid twenties above at the elementary level and reduce those down to 15 to 18 students. And you'd see that children learn much better. The reality is, as long as I've been here, I have budgeted at the elementary level to have our elementary schools operate at class sizes of 18 plus or minus one at the elementary level. And we have, you know, very small class. elementary level, and we have very small class sizes. And so we're in the sweet spot when it comes to the size of elementary classes. But when we came into regionalization, Chatham Elementary School had some very small classes. There were classes of eleven children, fourteen children, and some arguably too small. There's actually not a lot of literature that's been written on the effects of too small. But you can imagine that if you have classes that start to get too small, it becomes too small to have a good discussion in the classroom. And at times, you end up having situations where those personal dynamics, strong personalities take over small classes and really disrupt group dynamics when it comes to learning. So there's, but as I said, there's not a lot on what's too small. There's a lot that's been done in the literature on positive impacts if you get into that fifteen to eighteen student range, which is really where Monomoy has been. So the other thing to understand is if you have a small school, is that a good thing or not a good thing? I think there are a lot of Chatham families in particular who really appreciate the intimacy of the small Chatham Elementary School. And I think what we heard when I presented at the Chatham Select Board is that there is a lot of love amongst that board and their constituency that have spoke to the select board about a want for that, to have that intimate, small intimate elementary school. So there are some people that really like that. There are others that do have some concerns. And you can imagine the dilemma that creeps up if you have one, if we're at Harwich Elementary School, let's say you have, your child's in a kindergarten class, and there's a classmate in that kindergarten class who your child just doesn't get along with for whatever reason. If you, if we go from, at Harwich Elementary School, you can request that the following year, that your child not be placed with another child, or the teachers will go and say, these two children really shouldn't be in the same class together, to have the ability to kind of mix the children into groupings that can be very productive for learning. But you run the risk in a very small elementary school that if there's an interpersonal dynamic that's not working in kindergarten, it's going to be not working in first grade, in second grade, in third grade, in fourth grade. It's potentially going to be five very challenging years. So I think there are some that are worried about child's social emotional growth about that. But we also have to keep in mind that having access to peers is really important for our teachers, too. And having another first grade teacher to go and bounce lesson plans off of is important. But at Chatham Elementary School, we're heading into a place where there isn't going to be that grade level peer to bounce those ideas off of for our staff either. So the one thing I want to emphasize here is, again, this isn't a situation that the superintendent nor the school committee can fix on their own. There is a clause within our regional agreement that says there shall be at least one elementary school in each town and that the children from each of those towns will attend the elementary schools in which they reside. And there's a little exception there for special cases. You can imagine if we have a special education program at one elementary school, there's latitude within the regional agreement to allow for us to send children with special needs to a program that would best serve them at the other elementary school. And there's also, within state law, the ability to have school choice from one building to the other. But there isn't the ability for the superintendent to just say, oh, let's send East Harwich to Chatham Elementary School to increase the enrollment at Chatham Elementary School. Or the school committee or superintendent can't say, let's go and create upper and lower schools where older children go to, let's say, Harwich Elementary School and younger children to Chatham Elementary School or vice versa. Those things would have to involve changing the regional agreement, and this is a bigger conversation. I would actually say the fiscal conversation is something that I do think there is time for minds to go and reach some way to address it in this fiscal year. I think addressing the educational piece is going to take conversations that are going to need to go well into the spring and hopefully beyond COVID and when we get a chance to bring more people together face to face to address what's going to be the best, for our students and our staff, when it comes to providing great teaching and learning in both elementary schools. So as I said, this isn't a new conversation. Back in November of two thousand seventeen, it was clear that what we were seeing was the first time that Chatham Elementary School, since we regionalized, was dropping from three sections of kindergarten to only two sections of kindergarten. And people were concerned in two thousand seventeen that two sections of kindergarten was starting to become too small of an elementary school. And we did an initial survey out to families and staff to say, hey, what makes the most sense when it comes to elementary configuration? Should we just keep the regional agreement as it is? Should we redistrict and have some children who live in Harwich closer to Chatham go to Chatham Elementary School to try to balance out some of the class sizes and to have at least two sections of children at Chatham Elementary School, if not three? Or should we create upper and lower elementary schools? And in two thousand seventeen, we had four hundred and fifty-three respondents. I presented the results of the survey to our school committee that year. And here's the quick, how those results broke out in two thousand seventeen. From our staff's standpoint, they much preferred the concept of upper and lower elementary schools, with sixty-nine percent of our staff responding that upper and lower would be preferable to them. When it came to the Chatham parents, the Chatham parents in two thousand seventeen preferred to see no change to the way the elementary schools were structured. However, there were almost a similar amount, thirty-nine percent of the parents had indicated that they would consider redistricting, to having some Harwich families join Chatham Elementary School to teach Chatham Elementary School at least two sections, if not three sections of children per grade level. Harwich families went the opposite direction. Harwich families wanted to see the formation of an upper and lower elementary school, and the thing that they least wanted to see was no change to the regional agreement. And that redistricting was somewhere in the middle, but not where the Harwich parents fell. School choice parents fell and they followed where the Harwich families were, with fifty-eight percent of them contemplating or preferring an upper and lower. So that was two thousand seventeen. And here we are, just a short time later, three years later, and a lot's changed. We now see that Chatham Elementary School is now not two kindergarten classrooms per year, but now only one kindergarten classroom. And Harwich Elementary School used to be six classrooms of kindergarten when we first came together as a school district. And now Harwich Elementary School is a consistent five classrooms of kindergarten. So we have a scenario that we could see out there in the future that by FY twenty five, just four years off now, we could conceivably fit all of the children and all of the elementary children in Monomoy under one roof at Harwich Elementary School with class sizes eighteen or fewer. And if we were to do that, that's where I think both towns would fiscally see the biggest savings, because again, you have that economies of scale that would happen. But I also, it was also very clear in listening to the Chatham Board that they very much want to see an elementary school still operating in their town. And so you have different things at once that families have and that staff may have. So we did an elementary survey again to our families this past December with now four options: to not change the regional agreement, option one; to redistrict where a section of Harwich would go to Chatham Elementary School; option three was this, create upper and lower elementary schools where you have older children in one building and younger elementary in the other elementary school; and then the last option is to look forward to FY twenty five and beyond and to have all of the elementary school children in Monomoy in one building at Harwich Elementary School. So this time around, we had four hundred and sixty-one respondents, almost identical to the previous survey. We tried to, in this, we took advantage of the concept of right choice voting, let's say, and had families respond with their first choice, second choice, third choice, fourth choice in terms of these options. So if we look at our staff, our staff at Chatham Elementary School most preferred, so the way I've kind of color-coded these, is what's in green is where they most preferred. What's in red is what they least preferred. What's in yellow is where there might be a possibility to find middle ground. So Chatham Elementary School most preferred the concept of an upper and lower. They were, they least preferred the notion of all being under one roof, but it was very similar to not changing at all. By contrast, to the Harwich Elementary staff, they too really saw the creation of upper and lower as something that would be very positive, not changing the regional agreement. Hold on one second while my... All right, sorry, sorry about the dog. And that not changing the regional agreement was something that teachers in both buildings would want to not see. When it came to the Chatham parents, Chatham parents, there was a shift between the FY twenty seventeen survey and the two thousand twenty survey. Now you're seeing the more Chatham parents are now favoring this notion of redistricting. I think they recognize that, or there's a larger number of Chatham parents that are recognizing that the school is starting to get small, perhaps too small, and there needs to be more children added. So redistricting was where more of them selected as their first choice. Again, being all under one roof at Harwich Elementary School is what they least wanted to see. The formation of an upper or lower might be a place where they could find middle ground. When it came to Harwich, it was the exact opposite. For the Harwich families, they would most prefer to see everybody under one roof at Harwich Elementary School. They would at least like to see this redistricting or no change, but perhaps a formation of an upper and lower might be the middle ground that they could see. And the school choice parents, just as they did in two thousand seventeen, responded, following along the lines of the Harwich Elementary parents. So how do we remedy one school potentially becoming too small? Again, any change to elementary school reconfiguration involves changing the regional agreement. And amending the regional agreement requires the support of the selectmen and the support of the voters at both town meetings. And again, this is an area where the school committee has established a goal to organize a visioning group to, in a community forum, to really look at this dilemma involving conversations and voices of stakeholders in both towns. The process has begun, and again, it's a process that I imagine is going to go throughout this spring and I would imagine into next year. I don't imagine that this is something that we're getting addressed by town meeting of this coming town meeting. So I'll stop there and stop sharing my screen to hear that out and answer any questions I might have.
Scott.
Chief?
Yeah, a couple of comments and questions. One, I think we need to be careful not to let this run out too far, meaning it has obvious, serious fiscal implications for us, and I know that my colleagues on the Howard Board feel the same way. So I think we need to try to make sure that we have a goal in mind, that is a goal that's sooner rather than later. Whether we can make town meeting or any of that, I'm not sure. But I don't want to let it linger too far. The other concern I have is, we need to, I guess we have a meeting this Friday, Scott, or a call relative to this as well, of the working group. And there, we need to hear again from the Chatham Board of Selectmen and their representatives, where they stand on this. I mean, I have, from what I've heard so far, I have mixed signals from the various select people who have represented themselves on the board relative to whether they're even willing to consider the issue we find ourselves in here. You know, I think that the parents understand what's going on, and I think we could work through a solution with the parents, but I think there is some issues on the select board that might hold us up a bit as well, because there are some there who just say, you know, you have an agreement with us and that's life and you're going to have to abide by it. Well, I don't think any one of us on this board are willing to go down that same road. I won't speak for everybody. But I would emphasize that with the fiscal situation we find ourselves in today, we need to come up with what are the solutions to this and try to resolve this as quickly as possible.
So, Chief, is it okay for me to respond back?
Yes, please, Scott.
Yes, so, good points. And again, I am cautiously optimistic that we can make headway on the fiscal piece this year. And we'll have a conversation on Friday. I know that I've reached out to our district's legal counsel to help inform and educate the, both myself, our business manager, and the town administrators in both towns and their business managers, first in terms of what the options are. So there are different ways to address it. There's a, addressing the fiscal piece in the long term, and long term could potentially even be for town meeting of this year. I think if Chatham were to look at the numbers and Harwich were to look at the numbers and say that the superintendent's recommendation that each town pay for its own elementary school makes sense, and that I think something like that is, I think, a doable change in And that I, I think something like that is, I, I think a doable change in the, to have that language happen and, and be presented for, for warrants, you know, here, you know, here this spring. But there's also another mechanism that, that some districts use. And there, there is an ability for, for two towns to agree to adopt an alternative assessment method. And, and that's what we're going to be discussing with, you know, with council in preparation for the, you know, for the working group meeting. But there are, there are communities that, that, you know, you would, you would, you could imagine that they would, at their town meetings, vote to not use the statutory method that is in their regional agreement, but vote to, to adopt a different assessment mechanism for that, you know, for that year. And as long as you're adopting it and then voting the budget, that you, you end up at the, at, at the desired outcome without, without opening that regional, that regional agreement. But I, but I do think that, that there's, I, I definitely hear and understand the fiscal urgency. But I also, I also am cautiously optimistic that, 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 that we can make headway. And I, I do think from the, from the conversations that were had at the last meeting, and I, I think Larry might have been part of the last meeting. I, I think, I, I, I do think that there's an understanding it, it, you know, at, you know, that was, you know, that was at the working group of that this is, the fiscal piece is something that needs to get addressed. And the, I think my takeaway from what I was hearing from the voices of the selectmen at the meeting that we had is that I think they all get the fiscal issue a, as well.
Thank you, Scott. I, other questions, comments? Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott, mine's basically like a three-tier ratchet up, you know, set of questions. The first one is specifically about the elementary schools and the desires. I'm trying to assign what kind of weight I would ascribe to the survey. And I'm kind of curious, in, in numbers rather than percentages, how many people responded to the survey?
So we, we had about four hundred and sixty-one, which, which I, you know, I, I think is a, it's a significant number of our families. It's, it's probably about half of our elementary family.
No, actually, I mean, that is statistically significant because you got six eighty-two right now. So I agree. The second question is, because it just seems like you've got a horizon question facing you, beyond the one that you got now. I don't really need an answer, but this is a question unless you start fueling it at the bottom with new people coming up. Right now, based on the projection for fiscal twenty-five versus fiscal twelve, that's a forty percent reduction. And that translates out as people moving up in the middle of the high school. It, we are, so the third part of this, we're not alone. I mean, the, the rest of the Cape is experiencing an analogous problem. Has, I, I know the state never considered this. Is there any mechanism for everybody to get together and talk about some sort of reallocation? Because we're all like pilfering from each other and there's no substantive end game here.
We had, we had a very similar question that happened when I spoke before the Chatham Board, Don. And I, you know, I, I think it was, I think it was couched in, could another town join us? You know, because we're, you know, and, and I think the reality is the Cape, you know, the Cape keeps, it, it, it's, it's now over two decades where each town continues to contract and contract. And, and the Cape, I, I, I wrote my doctoral dissertation on the, you know, the Wild West of school choice, offering, you know, you're pilfering children from other towns to maintain the size that you are. I, I, and, you know, one of the, you know, one of the things that I, you know, I mentioned in my dissertation at some point, you, you, you really hit, you, you hit, you hit a threshold where you maybe need to see greater regionalization happening at some point. But I also, you know, I also came from, you know, I, I came from an area of the country where you had larger school systems and, and, you know, and moved to New England and, and have spent my professional career in Massachusetts schools where, you know, where it's, it's, it's clear that we have this sort of Yankee provincialism on some, on some level, you know, where every town wants their elementary school. And, and I think, and I think you see it, you, you see it somehow in, in the surveys. You know, it's Harwich parents in the survey, you know, you're fine with everybody being under one roof. Right? And that's the last thing in the world that you solve from the, you know, from the Chatham, you know, parents. But you also heard very clearly when I, you know, from the Chatham Select Board that there's a want for an elementary school in their town. It's just they, there's, there's also very much, I think, a want to, how do we make that elementary school relevant?
I, I get that, and that's the reason I was bringing out the, the larger problem here. I'm the only guy that I can think of that spans generationally, two different generations of, of school age kids. Where I've seen this develop since the nineties to the point where we're at now. Because I've got a thirteen-year-old and I'm looking around the Cape. It's a reductionist formula and it doesn't seem like the state ever anticipated a pan, you know, a, a pan-regional problem where, where everybody's experiencing enrollment declines.
Yeah, it's, you know, even when I, my, my former regional district that I came from, I, I, I know that when we look out, I think it was FY thirty-three, and I, I said, it looks like we're heading towards something at FY thirty-three that's about an eighty-seven thirteen split. I, I came from a school district that was an eighty-seven thirteen split. But, but it was a stable eighty-seven thirteen split. It, it, you know, it, it, you know, for the thirteen years I was there, it was, you know, it was always in that eighty-seven thirteen, give or take. You know, this is, this has been, you know, since I've been here, you know, sort of a one-way direction. And at some point, you know, I, I think the worry, and this is, you know, this is the flag that, you know, that, that I was waving at, you know, in the, what I wrote and in my conversation with the select board is, you know, we have a, we have a kindergarten cohort at Chatham Elementary School this year. If COVID hadn't happened and they were meeting in person, that, that didn't have enough children from Chatham to fill out that class alone. You know, it, it used to be that we had more than enough children from Chatham to fill out a couple kindergarten classrooms. And then we had some Harwich kids that, that, you know, brought it up to, you know, that brought it up to three. But, but this is, you know, we're, we're hitting that point where, where it's, it's starting to get so small. What happens if, if you don't have enough kids for one kindergarten classroom? And then what do you do?
I'm, I'm not expecting an answer tonight. I was just observing the fact that both towns are heading towards a median age group of sixty-five and older, being the majority of their residents. Those people don't have children to deliver to the school system. So this is not a problem that's going away in the next year or two.
Thank you, Don. Other questions or comments? Scott and Steve, just to follow up on Steve's comment. And Scott, you're correct, I was at the last working group and I won't be the next one because Steve will be the next one. But I did, I do agree with you that the Chatham Selectmen certainly recognized the facts presented in your detailed report. And by the way, thank you for that. And thank you for separating out the fiscal responses, fiscal aspects of that, and the educational aspects. My sense is, however, that at least one of the selectmen was maybe a little reticent in how much we, they should, we should move ahead on the fiscal side. Not that there was a disagreement that something had to be done. And my concern is, is that in order to get this through both town meetings, I'm hoping we get enthusiastic support of, of a fiscal warrant article to town meeting so we can move ahead. I think anything less than that will make it somewhat difficult. And that could be our selling point tonight and going forward, that we work together on this.
That I, I would definitely, I would definitely agree. It's, I, I think there, I think that, I think all the parties, including my school committee, understand that when the superintendent, you know, goes out on a limb here and says, hey, here's, here's his recommendation. And, you know, and the recommendation is that, you know, that there's, there's about a five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar gulf is, is what, you know, what I've kind of clearly laid out the case for in, in the document that I've shared between both boards, you know, that, that needs to be addressed. I, I think it, it puts, you know, it, it puts some, some pressure, let's say, for, for productive conversations to be happening. Otherwise, I can imagine that the Harwich taxpayers are going to be saying, you know, whatever happened to that, you know, the superintendent's recommendation? And, and, you know, so it's a, it's, it's an awkward limb to go out on, but at some point, somebody's got to go and say, hey, you know, here's, here's an issue that we need to tackle and we have two towns that we have to go and, you know, bring together.
Thank you, Scott. Before we leave this discussion, Tina, do you wish to have a comment? And then we'll move to the next subject.
Yes, Larry, and thank you for calling on me. I'm just turning my camera on. Yes, thank you very much. I just really wanted to echo, I guess Scott's comment, maybe it was Steve's. I mean, the school committee has recognized that this isn't our decision all by ourselves or the superintendent, which he said earlier, we, it's really about bringing everybody to the table, which was the purpose of the working group. Because I think we all have to hear the same information and to hopefully come to a conclusion together. This is, you know, so this is, was a big goal for us this year for our school committee is to just launch this work group and then later on, our other work group with the parents and everybody else about the educational piece. But I thank you all for listening. I mean, this is a really, really important conversation and the working group itself is very productive. And I'm facilitating the work group as the chair of the school committee because it was our decision to bring everybody to the table. It's necessary, I think, to do that. This is, you know, a big decision for everybody. So that's really my only comment. I just want to thank everybody for listening. I joined Scott two or three weeks ago at the Chatham Board of Selectmen. So everyone is listening. I can assure you that Chatham, based on my observations and conversations, that they do understand the equity piece. And at the same time, they are looking for what might be that long-term solution. So we just have to kind of come together on this.
Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Scott, as well. And we'll continue this discussion, these discussions in the future. Joe, any final thoughts? We'll move.
Just as you'll see in my TA report, the calendar for the town meeting and budget process. Dr. Carpenter will be back next week with Bob Sanborn for them to both present their draft numbers for their budgets. So just the way the calendar works, I guess, but very timely and necessary information.
Okay, thank you, Joe. And thank you, folks. We'll move on to the next agenda item then, which is a consent agenda. Does anyone care to, Don?
Yeah, before you start going into a motion here, this is the first, when this was put on the agenda, this is the first I saw this. Typically, we don't actually go through a chair and fire somebody without the selectman at least sending a letter to ask them if they were still interested in participating and, and then giving them the opportunity to resign.
Yeah. It, it was new to me as well. I'm not sure if anyone saw before this.
This is not the way we've ever done this. I know the charter provides.
I'll take your recommendation. Want to hold on this until we have a chance to follow it up in more normal procedure?
Yeah, I'd like the front office to just send a letter to, or certify, to say, you know, you haven't had, you've had excessive unexcused absences and, you know, do you plan on being more involved or would you like to take the opportunity to resign rather than firing someone?
Joe, are you comfortable with that?
Certainly.
I'd, I'd, Larry, if I may.
Michael, yes, please.
This has come up before, I believe, in the Housing Committee as well. And I think that the answer was the same. So thank Don for bringing that up and not just voting this through. I think somebody, whoever is the liaison to the Housing Committee or somebody on the interview committee should also reach out to this committee member. Because as I said, there has been some communication issues on this committee in the past. I believe we dealt with one a year ago, same sort of thing. So I, I would, I wouldn't put this on staff. I would put this on, on the Board of Selectmen, either the, either the liaison to the committee or somebody on the interview committee.
I'd be happy to do it. I appreciate Michael's comment because it's, generally, our job isn't to push people away. It's, it's to find out what's going on and see if we can fix it.
Okay. Uh, Steve, go ahead.
There had been, there had been some implication that, you know, there's been a lot of effort to try to contact this individual and try to, you know, find out why there hasn't been any attendance or responsiveness. And I think that's what, the genesis of, of, of this move. However, I would agree with both Michael and Don that, you know, we, we should go about it a little bit differently here.
Stephen, do you want to do, make the approach to her or you want me to or?
Sure, I mean, e- either way, it's fine. I'll, I'll give you a call, Don.
Okay, thank you. So if the chair could just hold that in abeyance and not take?
We'll hold this until, until you, until you get back to me. And we'll, and, and to Joe, then we'll put it on the agenda again.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, uh, new business is mooring license agreements, Joe?
Larry?
You?
Larry, if I may?
I was going to go first, but you're going to give this to John as well?
No, I, I would.
Michael, I think, let me go to Michael on this one.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a motion. This is a pretty standard thing we go through and unless John thinks we need to have a conversation about it, it seems like a standard annual thing that we do.
Well, that's why I saw you come up, I can't, I went to you first. It said, there's an objection, Michael, I appreciate the motion for these three.
John's lit up, so I'm just going to see if John has anything to add.
I don't have anything to add. I support all three license agreements.
Thank you. With that, I would move that we approve the Allen Harbor Marine Services, Allen Harbor, the Allen Harbor Mooring Field to Allen Harbor Marine Services, the Whichmere Inner Harbor and Whichmere Outer Harbor to Harwich Port Boatyard, and the Round Cove Pleasant Bay and Herring River to AGL Mooring Service. And these are for the mooring license agreements.
Second.
Saying further discussion. Anyone on the Zoom call wish you bring something forward? If not, we have a motion in a second. I'll call for a roll call. Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So, thank you, John.
I'm an I as well, Larry.
An I, okay, sorry about that. I try to rotate the names and sometimes I should just go in the order, right?
No problem.
Moving on to the liquor license.
Larry, I move.
Michael?
Larry, I move that we approve section one point zero seven of the Harwich Board of Selectmen liquor license regulations request for closure by a licensed establishment, Brax Landing, as presented.
Again.
Any discussion? Take a roll call. Michael, go ahead.
The only discussion I would have is just to say it's, 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 it's really awful that these establishments, establishments are being forced to close. Obviously, we're living in some pretty tough times right now, but, you know, this is another institution in the town of Harwich that's closing for the winter because they have to and the staff being laid off. So it, it's, it is troubling to watch this unravel, but here we are.
I agree, and this one was especially discouraging because the implication is there's some doubt whether they will be able to reopen at the end of this, which is. Yeah, not much more to add to that.
And, and for those who aren't.
Don?
Mr. Chair, for those who weren't familiar with this, I'm sure Michael is, having grown up here in Stephen, too. But the genesis of this particular business, as it's changed hands. But the genesis of this particular business, as it's changed hands over the years, was it really was only seasonal. Then Jeff finally was able to build it up along with, it's part of Mr. Peavy, to the point where it existed all year round. It's just kind of sad that we're at the point now where it could be existential.
Agreed. Okay, I'll take a roll call. Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an I for closure by size temporarily, we hope. Next is.
All right, if I may, I'm going to just keep going.
Okay, go ahead.
Unless there's objection from another board member.
Nope.
I hear none, so move ahead, please, Michael.
I move that we approve subject to the response from an upcoming disciplinary hearing. Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 12, Annual On-Premise Wines and Malt Liquor License Renewal for Amber Pizza, DBA Amber 600 Route 28.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Thank you, Ed. I think I spoke over.
The only comment I have, Larry, is just reading through the application packet. The box that was checked on the application said change of license type. I would ask if that's the way it's supposed to be. I don't believe the license types changed.
So the, I'm not aware of what you have right in front of you, but the full packet, the ABCC has indicated that we strike through, because their records still view it as a package store, to change it to restaurant. And that's why they've indicated to the applicant to check that box. However, the ABCC is expecting to receive this as a renewal and to categorize it as a restaurant. So this is all in accordance with the ABCC directives.
Just want to make sure the Amber's okay with the way we're voting this.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'll start with, yes, Ed?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Don?
Right.
Steve?
Yeah.
Okay, Larry. Okay, I move that we approve 2021 Annual Lodging House License Renewal for Barnaby Inn 36 Route 28.
Your second? Discussion? Hearing done, I'll take a roll call vote. Don?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Okay, I move that we approve 2021 Annual Auto License Renewals for all Performance 266 Cleaning Road, Class 4 Auto Repairman, and Harwich Port Boatyard, Inc., Four Harbor Road, for Class 1 Agents and Sellers.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing done, I'll take a roll call vote. Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Michael, wish you carry on?
I do. I move that we approve 2021 Annual Common Vicuulars License Renewals, 1 through 5, as presented in the packet.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, I'll take a roll call. Stephen?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Next item I'm holding at the moment. I was contacted a few days ago, Harwich, I want to say Harwich Junior Theater, obviously is, I guess I'm close enough. It's recipient of a grant that they wanted to discuss with us. But I was too quick putting it on the agenda. They want to give a more full discussion on the 25th meeting. So they will be back. Moving to old business.
I'll continue.
Go ahead, Michael.
I move that we approve the reappointment of Arthur Bowden to the Barnstable County Home Consortium Advisory Council, term to expire January 1st, 2024.
Second.
Discussion?
If I may, Larry. Can someone tell me that Art Bowden said that he wanted this, number one, and that there was nobody else that we interviewed or put it out there that may want this? Was this vetted?
I guess I'll rely on Don and Ed to comment on that.
Yes. You know, we had an email last week that I said that we always reserve the right to interview people. But Art has indicated he wants to do it. As far as Michael's questions, has anybody else indicated whether or not they were interested? We had no applications for that. But I mean, if Michael knows of somebody, we're going to hold it off.
I do not. Thank you for the explanation. And I know that we can only interview those who apply. I just wanted to put it out, just to ask if we had, in fact, interviewed anyone and that Art actually said he wanted to do it.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Michael and Don. I'll go roll call, vote in, Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
If I may?
I'm leaving it to you, Michael, to go through these.
Okay, thank you. I move that we deny the request for a hardship reduction for liquor license fee for Jack, Inc., DBA Castaways, 986 Main Street.
Is there a second?
And then?
Comments? Yes, Michael.
So I did speak to, as we said to the board a few weeks back, Ed and I did have a conversation about this and I do owe you, Mr. Chair, an explanation. But the short explanation is what we do for one, we have to do for all. And, you know, in listening to Joe's comments from previous meeting on this, and I think I also commented, we've budgeted this money. And that may to some be a scapegoat, but the town is down 12%. We, as a board, put some lightning fast regulations in place to allow people to think outside the box and do outdoor seating. We fast track permitting process, we waive permitting fees. I think arguably, we've done more for our restaurants and businesses in the town of Harwich than any other town. And as Ed and I kind of walked through the criteria that we would have to see for people to be able to prove a hardship, there was a lot of financial information that would be involved in that and whether or not other assistance. But really what it came down to was these licenses have all been paid and we'd be giving money back. And if this is something that the board is interested in, we should be having these conversations now for next year's license fees so that we can put it as part of our budget. And if it's something that the board wants to give back, we should be giving back in a year that we haven't approved the budget yet. So we couldn't come up with criteria that really made sense to go backwards and give discounts on licenses. And if we did, we really, as a board, should think about doing that for all of our small business permits and taxpayers that are struggling to pay their taxes right now. So there's a lot that we thought about and a lot of doors that would be open if we started approving these. And based on past comments from board members, we thought this wouldn't be the year for that.
Thank you for that explanation, Michael. Any other comments? Ed?
Eric, yeah, additionally, you know, I guess one of the most sort of troublesome issues, you know, if we were going to give a hardship consideration, then we needed to have some evidence of a hardship in that, as Mike said, would have involved in us dealing in understanding the establishment's financial situation. And I had opportunities to chat with two operators who weren't happy that they had to pay the full price of the license, but were less happy on the prospect of to get a break that they would have to make public or even in a confidential way to the selectmen their financial situations.
Thank you, Ed. Bob, I see you're lit up. Do you wish to comment on this?
Yeah, I guess my comment would be, as, you know, restaurateur trying to make it in these times, is maybe it's not so much the hardship right now is if the license fee could become due in June or July. It's summer when we have full receipts. If that could be thought of, instead of having the license come due in December when nobody has any business, that would be my comment.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Any other comments? I'm not, I'm not sure the process, whether we could, as I think Michael suggested, the fees have mainly been collected at this point.
Right.
So if there's no other discussion, I'll go for a roll call vote. Steve?
Hi.
Don?
It's Dave.
Michael?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So Joe, 401 on this, on this one.
I move that we vote to extend Robert C. Lawton Jr.'s contract to January 31st, 2021.
Any discussion?
Larry?
Michael?
Yeah, can Joe just give us an update on why we're extending it for another month and how soon we could anticipate being brought forward a assistant town administrator?
So Bob and I met before the break and he indicated there's a few projects that he's still working on. And I'd like to rely upon his assistance, as he and I meet tomorrow, to go through the list to set up the first round of interviews. And so I'm hopeful that by having Bob for the rest of the month, it'll help continue the progress on procurement. And I'll get closer to a decision on an assistant town administrator, hopefully within the month.
That's good. And then I would just point out, maybe Bob could mute his mic for us.
Oh, sorry.
Noise. Hearing no other discussion, I'll go for a roll call vote. I'll start with I. Steve?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Moving on?
On this one, I think that this warrants some explanation.
I think Joe and Griffin are going to present this.
Actually, I believe Griffin, Ed, and Bob are going to present. But I know Griffin, Griffin has preliminary information on this.
Welcome again, Dan, and hello, Griffin.
Hi, everyone. So I think you've seen in the packet, we received some information, some concept plans just today from Tool Design Group. As a result of the meeting, I believe at the end of November, just before Thanksgiving holiday, we had discussed the Shared Streets Grant and the fact that a new round had become available. We had booked to potentially get an application for the early round in December. But before that, we engaged one of the recommended consultants that Mass DOT has. There's three consultants that are recommended. We reached out to Tool Design and Tool Design is funded through the BAR Foundation to provide this assistance free of charge through a grant with the BAR Foundation. So Tool Design has put together these sketches. We had a couple garments calls with them and communication back and forth. Tool has put together these sketches that show some of these improvements. And most of these are, they're temporary improvements that could become permanent. But a lot of it is not necessarily looking to rebuild sidewalks per se, but to extend sidewalks, extend dining spaces, provide, you know, larger pedestrian areas, really in response to COVID and the need for greater separation and the like. So Tool has put together the plans that are, that were, I think, distributed to folks today and are in the packet. Basically, four sketches moving from west to east that show some relatively minor changes, but some changes to some parking, some parallel parking, extending, expanding sidewalk areas and pedestrian and dining areas. And also improving ADA connectivity through the improvement of crosswalks and ADA ramps where they might not exist in full compliance today. So, you know, we, understanding that this information is coming late today, the thought was that, and one of the deadlines for the application, for the grant application is tomorrow. There is another filing deadline or deadline at the end of the month. The thought was that we would, you know, have a discussion today, eventually bring it back next week and then be ready to file the application by the end of the month. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions or Ed or Bob, if you want to add all.
I just have a comment. I was particularly impressed with the pedestrian safety aspects of it and the ADA aspect. Because we all know that's a miserable corner. You know, Bob reminds me that often. But they actually created a little more turning space as well, which impressed me on.
Yeah, what, Larry, if I may, one of the things that Tool mentioned in the email when they transmitted this over is the crosswalk on the westernmost, I guess, the three crosswalks that are shown in Pleasant Lake I have intersection. The westernmost one might be a little difficult to construct under this grant program. And that might be something we look to do more permanently with whatever other funding that we might have. There's some other improvements, there's some sidewalk that needs to be added on that corner. So you actually land on a sidewalk. It's a little funky the way it is, but that was one thing that Tool brought up to me that we might have to change just for this, for this go around. But my intent would be to, my hope would be that some of these, you know, temporary improvements could be realized and this could allow us to move towards a more permanent set of improvements for this area. You know, if these bump outs work and they really, this paint and whatnot really enhances things, then we might want to think about doing more permanent sidewalks in these areas as opposed to the temporary, which is what the grant program is aiming at.
Is there ever any thought of lights at intersections for the help as well?
Certainly, but I don't believe the grant program, and we can have Tool Design, they're available next week. But I don't think grant program would pay for that. That would be something that we would want to go through. Probably if, potentially the tip program, maybe complete streets. But this grant program wouldn't necessarily be the avenue for that.
Well, plus you'd need some expert opinion whether it actually helped or not, which I'm not that.
There'd be a large traffic study that would have to be done upfront to sort of determine what the impacts would be to that, to that change. But that's something that I can follow up with you on.
Okay. Ed, do you wish to comment?
Yeah. Griffin indicated that there was an application available tomorrow. I think, given that we just got these drawings today, we should probably have some discussion and bet them with some of the members of the community before sending them in. So I think one, it is a responsible thing to do, but also having public input is part of the package of the application will help to support our application for approval. You know, I think one of the.
Can I just interrupt you? What is the deadline for the application then?
Well, there's several. One's tomorrow, end of day. The next is January, February, what was it, 4th?
January 29th and then February 4th.
Yeah. The last one is at the end of February, I know, not the beginning. But anyway, they're sort of a month apart, so. And the other, the other issue, one of the issues that, obviously, this, the funding levels wouldn't allow for. But in one of the issues with the problems in the center is the speed of traffic that comes highballing through. And so one of the. And so one of the things I've been looking at as I drive around the Cape in Marston's Mills, in Barnstable Village, a number of other places are what they are using, what they call speed tables to put your cross rocks on. They're at the same level as the cross, as the sidewalk. So you don't have actually handicap ramps and there's a gentle up ramp and down ramp to it. So you can drive over it at twenty five miles an hour and it's fairly comfortable. You get going much faster than that. It becomes less comfortable. The up ramp and down ramp are gentle enough that it doesn't present a problem with snow plowing or any of those sorts of things. But it does tend to slow, moderate the traffic speeds as, as people come through an area like Harwich Center. And so as we look at, I would, you know, as we look at the placement of crosswalks, additional crosswalks, which I think are needed, we also look at them with the thought of eventually having them done as speed tables. And that may provide a consideration on where we, we put them in. The other, the other issue that Bob and I have been talking about is, is the connectivity of Harwich Center to the bike, bike trail to encourage the interaction, both in the commercial sector, but also, you know, for the historical museum, the library, the other aspects of the historic district for to attract people off of the bike trail rather than just sort of bicycling on by just to the north of it.
Thank you, Ed. Bob, you were the initiator of this discussion. Do you wish to comment?
Yes, I just want to say, you know, somebody in business in a restaurant right now, which is a very tough place to be, the bike path is the natural magnet for us. We've been really benefited by that. So the more connectivity we can get with that helps us. I feel like I've done a traffic study all year on that, on that intersection. And I can tell you, it's too fast. And I just hope that we can apply for this rather quickly because nothing's going to happen unless we get the money. So I'm hoping that they'll look good on us. I've got some people set up that want to, you know, write letters. I've got a petition going. These drawings are up on the wall at the seal for public comment. I think we already have twenty five signatures today saying fix the sidewalk. I'm very jealous of Mr. Patel's sidewalk. I know that's not in this proposal, but as we move forward, this is a step. I would really like us to take that step as soon as possible, if we could tomorrow, but I don't know if it's complete enough. But I'm just here to tell you, I'm working really hard to get support and get something done. And I think this will be good for the town.
Ed, what's your thoughts on getting some public comment and doing it as quickly as possible?
Well, now, you know, now that we actually have something to show and present, look, we can set that up, I think, fairly quickly. Probably it would be good to arrange.
So your intent is if we can, we miss tomorrow, but we get to next one, the end of the month?
Yeah. Do a walking tour and then setting up a Zoom presentation for people to come and see what's being proposed.
Okay. Joe and Griffin, is that something you, you can, can or should help on?
Absolutely. And, excuse me, the confusion on dates was the, the award is also scheduled a month after submittal. So I don't think we're in a good space to do it for tomorrow because we need that community outreach portion of it. But I think the timing works very well for the twenty ninth. And then Ed was correct, the next one after that isn't until February twenty sixth, that's the last round. The other thing we just have to be mindful of is whatever round we participate in, all of the funds have to be expended by May thirty first of two thousand and twenty one. So, you know, if we push it out, I wouldn't recommend pushing it out past January because then we're putting pressure on the other end to get, get it done and get the money spent or we lose it. So I do think the twenty ninth is a realistic goal and I think we can get the community output or outreach, I should say, done within the next few weeks.
Yep.
Okay, so last thing, commitment, Ken.
Larry?
Michael?
Larry, why couldn't we schedule a public presentation for next week? It sounds to me like Bob has enough people on his wall to participate in the public presentation part of this. And then, and then announce a walking tour for the following day, two days, week, so that we're prepared way ahead of the twenty ninth. I mean, I've unfortunately watched us kick some projects down the road far enough where we don't get them. And I think Bob brought up an interesting point. I think the longer we wait, the more people that apply, the more people apply, the less we're going to, the less chance we are going to be to get this. So he's already done some public outreach. So tonight we had you know, change in a mooring that I don't think, change in a slip that I don't think anybody heard of and nobody participated in. And I can almost guarantee Bob will have people on the call next week. There's also the Howard Center Initiative Committee, which Stephen Ford is our liaison to, and I know there's some pretty key players on that first committee that Stephen could reach out to that I'm sure would want to participate in a presentation next week if they had time to do it. So I would recommend that we put this on for next week and it's important enough. We've been talking about Howard Center for years. We finally have a business and a resident that's taking this and running with it and we should, we should really get this thing going quick.
Thank you, Michael. Cindy?
Larry, also too, we may want to also include in this, it's also part of the designation sooner that we get for the cultural districts as well. And when we did have that come across, I was pretty adamant that Harwich Center needed to be one of those districts. Usually the state doesn't let you have two, but we are still working on that. So I think it's important that we bring in maybe some of those cultural partners too. If you want me to help with this, I have no problem doing that. I'd be more than happy to see how we can get this all put together.
Can I mention?
Can we do this as quickly as Michael suggests?
Sure.
I mean, I think we can because we can bring it back and then we can follow up with the walking tour afterwards. We flip it a little.
Let's see. No, you know, I've just briefly gone through the drawings, so I'm not exactly entirely sure what's into it. And so for me to commit to say that they're ready to, a hundred percent ready to be presented as, as, as the the proposal we want to put forward. I don't know. I mean, you know, I haven't really.
Let me ask a follow up, a follow up question. How finite or how specific do our, does our proposal have to be? If we made a proposal based on this, is there some leeway going forward as we get public comment? So we can get our application in line?
The short answer is no. The community outreach has to be a big part of it and we need to be, we need to have everything buttoned up with narratives, support letters and everything else. So I don't think working just off the drawings tonight would be sufficient to put it together for tomorrow. And we have enough time to do it more comprehensively for the twenty ninth.
Okay.
Good. Let's see what? Could I say one other thing? The seal this month, the Massachusetts Restaurant Association gave us their newsletter. We're the restaurant of their month for their newsletter in January. So they're kind of really pushing Harwich for us. And we've, we've got some good support on this. So I'd really like to get together and get it going. Yep.
Well, I think we have commitments right now.
Sorry.
I'm just saying, I think we have commitments now from Cindy and Ed and Griffin and Joe to move this as quickly as we can. Bob, you're obviously committed.
Yeah.
Don, did you wish to speak?
No, this is beyond my pay grade. Ed and Bob know what they're talking about. Griffin has certainly done a lot of work on this.
Okay, this means we need to come back before here, the week before the twenty ninth, and so we can approve it in plenty of time to, to meet that deadline, right?
See, we have a, today's the fourth, next week is the eleventh.
Eleventh.
And then the eighteenth, and then we have one more meeting. We have a meeting.
Yeah, the next meeting, the, well, eighteenth is Martin Luther King Day. So I assume the next board meeting will be the nineteenth. If we could shoot for the nineteenth to bring this back, is that too aggressive?
No, I think, I think that's great. Yeah, no, we should try, we should try. Yeah.
Okay, let's shoot for the nineteenth. Joe, is that acceptable?
I'm looking at my engineer to get a sense. So if he thinks based on Tool Design's availability.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there's, if we're, if we want to wait until after a walking tour, the nineteenth is fine. We may even be ready for next week to, to discuss it with, with Tool. I know Tool is available next week. I don't want to push anything, but.
So you're okay with the nineteenth?
Yes. I, I want to give Tool enough time to react if we're going to, if we're going to make drastic changes. That's my only concern.
Okay, we'll tentatively schedule for the nineteenth and Griffin, you get back to Joe if, if that's not acceptable.
Okay.
Larry, just one, one closing comment? I just, I just want to say how much I appreciate the volume and the quality of stuff that's coming out of the corner office with as few people as we've got to do it. So I mean, this, it's, this is really a nice looking design and I appreciate all the effort that everybody's put into this.
Yeah, we all agreed. Okay, so we'll move on with that. Next one is Dan, is the sewer regulations, use regulations discussion.
Yeah, good evening. So contained in tonight's packet is the most recent version of the sewer use regulations proposed for adoption. Included with the regulations is an edit log identifying changes that were made to the document. I've also provided the document, the regulations to Megan for the Board of Health comments as well. So the next step in the process for adoption is in accordance with the IMA, section ten, which requires Harwich to forward a copy of any proposed revisions to Chatham for review and comment no later than forty five days prior to our proposed adoption. At which point Chatham will have fifteen days to review and comment, at which point we would then host our, our public hearing. So I guess I'm here to answer any questions. A lot of the edits were grammatical. There was also the addition of the two-year hookup window and the revision to allow registered sanitarians to do the designs as well, which were the two, you know, the two big ticket items. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Dan, for that. I agree. When you go through that, most of your corrections are changing Chatham to Harwich and more editorial. The two substantive ones you've mentioned are the page nine, section six, which is replace one year to two year. I think we've had some discussions and I was in the original discussion with the Board of Health on that for various reasons, which I'm not sure are relevant anymore. Is there, is there a reason to push Irish, which took was one year at this point?
To be honest, I think that it's going to be pretty cumbersome to even have that many people hook up in one year. To be quite honest, maybe unrealistic to expect, you know, all four hundred plus people in East Harwich to connect within the next three hundred and sixty five days. That said, I, I, it would, it's, you know, the, the board's decision, the commission's decision. So I would, I would leave it to you, but I don't know that there's any major impact one way or another if what we're asking people to do isn't entirely feasible.
Okay. That was our initial discussion that we're worried about that and worried about the, whether enough crews out there to do the work in one year. Because not only Harwich, it's Chatham is going to be hooking up.
Right.
I wanted to raise that. The second one seems to be pretty clear that from our point of view, I think we clearly want to allow sanitary engineers to, to do the work. So those are my two cents. What's the rest of the board think?
Well, you're good.
Yeah, well, Ed can go ahead.
Ed?
If you're worried about having enough capacity to do the hookups, you could probably guarantee it if you also licensed plumbers to do the hookups design.
Yeah, I was thinking more of actually construction guys, the guys digging the trenches and stuff.
Yeah.
Plumbers dig trenches too.
Okay.
My home state of California, septic systems primarily put in by plumbing companies.
Yeah. Okay. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only point that I would hope that Dan makes, and he's heard us say this before, is that was the modeling it after their agreement was a protection for their own assets because if there were leaks or things that they would crew damage to the town of Chatham because they own the pipes as well as the, you know, the system that was processing the effluent. This is a different circumstance. We don't, we don't actually, I mean, they don't own anything in the town. If we're delivering wastewater to them to be processed, but it's on our own risk. If somebody screws up, it's our pipes that we have to worry about repairing. And I don't see how they have skin in that game.
Yeah, and I would agree. I mean, you know, with respect to Chatham and Harwich's influence on them, you know, it's really with respect to the treatment process and the, the quality of the wastewater that we're sending to them. You know, if there is some industrial effluent that could mess up their treatment process, you know, that, that makes sense. Who puts the, the line on the paper doesn't have any impact on their operation.
Other comments, questions?
Do you need a motion to approve it?
I would like a motion. I think we, my recommendation is to, with Dan's comments is to, to take all those editorials comments, suggest that we move the connection period out from one year to two years to give some flexibility and strike the word civil as Dan has stated and require a sanitary engineer, which runs it to our normal list. If you agree with that, I would entertain a motion along those lines.
I would motion that we approve the agreement with those changes, Mr. Chair.
If I can make a point of clarification, for the, we were inserting civil, the original regulations just had engineer. So by, that would just allow any electrical engineer by that language to design a sewer connection, which isn't appropriate. So we added civil and then also added.
Sanitary engineer.
Yeah.
With those changes, I would move that we approve the agreement.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Other discussion? If not, I'll go with a roll call vote. Steve?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Ed?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you for that, Dan, and we'll prepare that and get the response from Chatham.
Great.
Next on the, see, where am I?
I'm up again.
Is it still Monday?
We're at the cat model, Dan. So, so you're again now. So, and Russ, good to see you.
Also in tonight's packet, contained memo identifying two proposed funding sources to support the agreement for the development of the townwide sewer cat model. The first is a two thousand and seven annual town meeting article seventeen that has a remaining balance of ninety eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety two dollars. The first is a 2007 annual town meeting Article 17 that has a remaining balance of $98,992. And that article, article was for the purpose of conducting a comprehensive wastewater management plan to determine the most cost-effective way to meet DEP and EPA imposed nitrogen limits in the town's impaired water bodies. The source of the remaining $51,000 is proposed to be from the FY21 Sewer Operating Budget. The availability of funds in the Sewer Operating Budget is related to the anticipated startup of the East Harwich Collection System. At the time that FY21 budget was being developed, the construction schedules indicated that the system would be going online in early winter for reasons beyond anyone's control. Current schedules reflecting completion this spring. So as a result, we have some anticipated or many anticipated operational costs that we're not going to incur this fiscal year. So where the funding sources are governed by two independently elected boards, I'm really here to kind, to gain consensus from the selectmen as to their palate for the proposed use. And I intend to have a similar discussion with the Water Wastewater Commission at their meeting tomorrow afternoon with respect to the Sewer Operating Budget funding. And then should both boards be in favor of, of use of these funds, I'd work with the procurement team to have an agreement drafted that would have all the appropriate signatures. So that's, that's my spiel, if you will, on the funding, and Russ is also here if you have any questions as to the modeling agreement.
Uh, thank you, Dan. Just in summary, I think we, your last time you presented this, I think we had a consensus view of the board that the modeling effort was well worthwhile. It's a tremendously expensive project. And sometimes it's nice to have some data and facts in front of you before you start spending the money. And this will help us do that. The, the, the question we had was how we pay for it. And you've put together a package, you and Joe and the Water Committee of how we handle the expenses. So I guess what you're asking for tonight is not a, basically another consensus that we're comfortable going ahead of the the Water and Wastewater Committee agrees with us as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, and really that, the, you know, use of that 2007 article, those remaining funds would be under the purview of the selectmen.
Okay.
You know, if there's consensus to use them for that purpose.
Okay. And saying that, is there, Joe?
I just want to correct one thing. The, the presence of that, the funds from 20, 2007 was really the, the legwork of Carol Kapola, our Finance Director, to track it down, to vet it, and to, to really question the use of it. And, you know, she asked all the tough questions and offered the funding. So really, this is in large part because of Dan's willingness to use the operating budget for sewer and Carol's great work in finding legitimate available source that we hadn't used. So I, I want to underscore that.
Thank you, Joe. And Carol, please comment, but obviously your help is very much appreciated.
Hi, good evening. It's Carol. I, I was able to locate the funds from 2007. I verified that at that point in time, the vote of town meeting and at the election was to borrow those funds. Those funds were borrowed in 2008, and I verified all of that information. So they are surplus funds at this point in time.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Joe, do we need to vote on this or consensus is enough?
Uh, no, really, Mr. Chairman, what you just said, I think, and I, and Dan, I would look to you, but really, as you've stated, that's what we're looking for. Dan, Carol, Griffin, and I wanted to come back to talk about the funding. And then, as Dan has said, he'll move forward if there's consensus. So really, it was just to update the board on the mechanism.
Is there any disagreement with a consensus? To, yes.
So I guess I got a, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
First, good evening, Russ, and, and I'll reiterate that the work that you did was the best work that I had seen on any sewer project that we had done. So thank you. Get it diving into the found money. The, the $500,000 from 2007, they created the CWMP that we took to town meeting and got voted, that said $240 million was what this was going to cost, that we then quickly found in Phase 2 a $12.5 million oops. We have absolutely, no, there's no confidence in this board whatsoever from the folks out in East Harwich, and I would, I would say that even more of the town than East Harwich. And so far, we've proven not to present anything correctly on this project, probably with the exception of what Russ brought forward and Dan brought forward a couple of weeks ago. So, and then I would, then I would argue on the $51,000, that every conversation that I remember having on the $51,000 was that the operating budget that we put together for the wastewater system was going to be in a deficit in out years, so that we were going to be running that year two, year three, year four, year five with additional money that we were going to go back to the taxpayers and ask for. And now we've just voted sewer regulations where we've given people two years to hook up instead of one year to hook up, which should further that deficit, unless I'm doing my math completely wrong, but there was nothing in the packet to look at. What's the hurry, I guess? It's January. Why wouldn't we go back to the taxpayers on 2000, on a 2007 appropriation and on an operating budget that's going to be in the deficit, rather than just find this money and say, great, let's spend it? Why not give the taxpayers the same presentation that Russ gave us, showing the benefit of this, and let them make the decision on whether they want to spend this money? And also be upfront about what the deficit and how many years the deficit is going to go on, on the operating budget, based on what we now have potential of hooking up, not even what we sold them on what we would be hooking up. So we can only hook up 400 now. When we created the operating budget, and, and maybe I'm wrong on this, but when we, when we talked about the operating budget, I think all of our numbers in the beginning until Dan got involved and started correcting things were based on 600 homes. So I think that the folks out in East Harwich are a bit confused, and that we ought to be bringing this back to them and letting them make the decision instead of us making this decision.
Uh, thank you, Michael, for that. I, I guess the point that I'm missing on that, or maybe I disagree with you on is, is that I look at this modeling effort as a way to answer the questions you've just raised. And it's the initial step so that we can better present the factual data on what our next decision should be. Not that this is trying to take doing this and then doing this in place of that decision, but we need a basis to better build a trust in the, in all Harwich that we're making the right decisions moving, moving forward.
So if I can respond, Larry, I agree with you 100%, but we still haven't gone back to the taxpayers and said, yes, we screwed up. Yes, there was a $12 million mistake, or whatever it happens to be today with the inflation numbers that there are. And yes, now we've gotten a real professional doing CAD modeling for us, and we're not going to make those mistakes anymore because instead, we're just going to make the decision again and tell them after the fact. And that's my problem.
Uh, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While not really agreeing, disagreeing with the substance of what Michael said, the thing as a representative of some of the people, not just of East Harwich, but the whole town, I would be reticent, kind of restating what you said as the chair, I'd be reticent to approve anything if we don't go forward with this modeling, because I don't have a lot of confidence in where we're heading based on where we've been. And, and Michael was right. This is the most professional I've seen the investigation be for the whole period. And I go back way longer than just the last few years. I've been following this ever since I left the board in 2006. So as far as I'm concerned, I couldn't, I really couldn't find in my heart to vote for anything sewer-related unless we start doing this so we can instill some confidence that we've left the past, we're going to do this professionally moving forward, and that's, that's the reason we're pausing, because we've been throwing money at this situation with, with junk science to a certain degree. I really prefer they get, they get the real answers so that when we talk to people wherever they are, East Harwich or the rest of the town, they have confidence that we're really trying to solve a legitimate problem.
And, and I just, Larry, Larry, just if I may, I completely agree with you, Don. My only point is, and I, and I agree, that we should absolutely do this CAD model. My only point is we should be letting the people of the town of Harwich, we should be explaining ourselves, not in one night where we're given a consensus to spend $150,000 of found money, but we should be telling the taxpayers, and we shouldn't be doing this at 9:20 at night. We should be letting them be involved in the decision. And I agree that we should not do another thing without this model.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. I'm Clara McClardy, in the Pleasant Bay watershed, one of the suspicious critical East Harwich residents. I've been reading the CWMP and also the Pleasant Bay Alliance page and the MEP PMDL report. And it seems to I feel that it hasn't been represented to me in all my time of trying to understand how the decisions have been made with the CWMP. I noticed that the East Harwich model has a baked-in 40% growth build-out in all of the scenarios that are modeled. I don't think that the residents of each East Harwich know that. The CWMP doesn't even examine any legitimate alternatives to a 40% build-out. And so all of the sewer-ing that's being required in East Harwich is partly to fund somebody's idea about the future that might not be our idea. And I think that possibly, well, reading the CWMP, it's a very fluffy, wordy, verbose document with sketchy graphs and diagrams that are a little bit deceptive. I know it's kind of arrogant to say that, but I really can't see it any other way, and I'd like to have someone explain it to me better. But I, I would love to see everyone admit openly that CDM Smith did some lousy job and that, that there's a big financial hiccup. And, you know, like Don and Mike have been saying, to acknowledge the impact this has on the taxpayers and that it has to be revisited, and that basically, I think what you guys are saying is Dan is redoing the work that we paid CWM Smith to do. He's double-checking it, CDM Smith, sorry, because nobody has much confidence in it. So let's bring that out. Let's go there. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I think in the end, I'm going to conclude and say we have, with some reservations, enough of a consensus to go back to the Water Committee and see if we can provide the funding and, and we can bring this back and, and look at it.
As to the previous comment, Larry, I'm all in. I agree. And Michael does, too, I'm pretty sure. And that's why we're pursuing this, is there's a very low confidence level about where we've been. But we got new people involved now, and I'd like to instill greater confidence in the community.
Okay. The same with that, Dan, is that, and Joe's, I gave you enough direction going forward?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Joe, there's no contracts tonight, so we can go through that?
Uh, yes, and that's my cue to start Town Administrator's Report. Building off of what Jan was, what were you really just talking about? We, the board had a dedicated meeting scheduled for Tuesday, January 12th for wastewater. However, we're not able to utilize that date because of a conflict with the planning board, which would be a live regulatory meeting that would be broadcast instead. So I just need to get some guidance from the board as to when and how you want to do your standalone deep dive into wastewater.
Uh, Joe, can, can you possibly, we should want to do that. Could you make, email us some, some records, some suggested dates? We can respond to you that way?
Sure. Is there a sense of dates that wouldn't work?
For me personally, I'm, I'm pretty open that week. You know, 13th would work for me, for instance, if that would work.
I'm good, but I hope we use, we think this metaphor about taking a deep dive into wastewater.
It's late, it's late. I own that one.
I'm fine with that week.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
All right.
And that concludes my report.
Uh, selectmen's reports. Steve?
Uh, I've got nothing.
Michael?
Uh, just a, a request on, a question that I asked, and tonight we gave a consensus on sewer regulations, but I had asked a legal opinion on whether or not we could form a regulation on whether, on large housing projects in East Harwich that weren't part of the prep for the CWMP. That was about two months ago. I think it was six meetings ago, and I still don't have an answer. There was no objection from the board, so I assume it was the consensus of the board. So I'd like to get an answer on that question. And then I would ask again, Larry, for you to identify to the public in maybe a memo, who was on the subcommittee with the school, talking about what was presented to us tonight, when the meetings are and what the topics have been, so that the rest of the public can understand what's going on other than just Dr. Carpenter's report. So those two things I have requests, and I would like to get sooner than later the legal opinion on the sewer regulation before we vote final sewer regulations.
Uh, good points, Mike. I know Joe's been working on the first part, the legal, and we can put something together. The, the school committee working group was sort of interesting in that Steve Ford is a liaison to that, to the, to the school committee. And I believe he was asked to then join the working group because he was a liaison. It didn't come to us as a formal, to the board as a formal committee, other than a working group, based on the liaison.
That's correct, that's correct, Larry.
I tended to help out when Steve was forced to be absent, and, and that's my reason I was there on that. So there was no, you know, oftentimes these committees, when they're formed by the selectmen themselves, have a, we formally form it. Steve, is that your understanding?
That, that's, that's correct. That's correct.
And I guess a follow-up, uh, I guess, Steve, and maybe Tina's prepared this anyway, they must I assume she's put, has put together minutes and so on that we could circulate the, to the board?
I'm, I'm sure she is. It's a, a meeting of a, a subcommittee meeting of, of the school committee, so I can't imagine she isn't. But I will check with her and make sure that I get back to you on that for the rest of the board.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Michael, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Steve, a Ed?
Yeah, I, I just have a question. Out of the golf course, I know they have a contract pending on finishing up the, the landscaping, and I was wondering when that's going to come back to us. I know it's somewhat time-sensitive.
I can work with Griffin and Roman Smart to get an answer on that.
Okay, because I'd hate to miss, have to rebid, rebid it if we, if we blow the timing on it.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, Don?
Nothing except to wish the community a happy and better New Year.
I agree with that. My, my only comment is, this is, it's been a long meeting. When there's times that we look at the agenda and they're, and they're super busy like this, should we try to hold a second meeting during the week and, and make it shorter? Have multiple meetings rather than one a week? I know we all have some evening commitments we have to work around. I, I know we all have some evening commitments we have to work around, but uh, uh, if it's okay with you, uh, you folks, maybe Joel, you and I can explore that when we have a meeting that looks to be overly large and we can split it up, see what happens.
I'm open to that.
I'm open to that, Larry. I think you just got to be cautious about what you put on another day. The, the public has become accustomed to meetings on Monday nights and that's what they go to. So if we're going to start changing that up for formality, things like licenses, I absolutely have no problem. But if we're going to be talking about uh, DHY or anything important at all, it should be done on the Monday night meetings, because that's where the public's going.
Yeah, fully agree. We could do the sort of more routine things on another night and go through relatively quickly and then open it up. Okay, we'll take that. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Don?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
And I'm an eye. And Joe, good night.